Good morning. It's nine o'clock. We will call to order today's meeting. I want to ask everybody if they will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning. Note for the record that there is a copy of the public meetings law on the north wall of legislative chambers. In the back, in the area back there, is an automatic defibrillator if needed for health reasons, and also if you have any electronic devices, I'd ask you to please mute them, silence them, or turn them off. With that, we will go to the Board of Equalization meeting and roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. Item B is call for a meeting and set Tuesday, October 15th as a date for hearing on certified assessment and corrections. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second, and by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle's vote won't appear due to technical difficulties, but he votes yes, as do the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes seven to zero.
Item C is citizens' comments, and this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related matters not listed on this week's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Saying none, we'll go on to resolutions D and E. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle is their second. Second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
While you're voting, just want to note that the Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, which I'm on the board of, has a vehicle listed for item E. Motion passes seven to zero.
Item F is protests, the penalties and interest for Palmer House Food Processing, Tech Inc., 17543, Jones Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68118. Mr. Goodwill.
Mike Goodwill, Douglas County Assessment and Register of Deeds Office. This is a circumstance where we received a personal property returned late, sent out a penalty notice, the taxpayer has protested claiming that they filed on time, and in the protest, the taxpayer says, "Well, if we only could see the postmark date on the letter, that would tell us a lot." How do I get this thing on? Beautiful. Can we zoom in at all? I want to zoom in on this postmark here. As you can see from the postmark, it's dated May 18th. The filing date is May 1st. So to believe that the taxpayer mailed it and filed it on time, you'd have to believe he mailed it and it spent three weeks at the post office before it got a postmark date. So actually, this is one that, I shouldn't probably say this, but this is the one the board could actually act on because the question is whether the penalty has been wrongly applied or incorrectly calculated. Had the taxpayer filed on time, the penalty would be wrongly applied. I don't know if it's possible to put the thing in the mail on the 29th of April and get a postmark date of May 18th. I would say it's extremely unlikely.
No, 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 just your motion is right.
Worth the Register of Deeds Assessor.
Does motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote. And does that include the adjournment?
Yes.
You have that, Mr. Clerk? No, you got the adjournment in there.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morgan. Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now call the roll for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
There we go. Motion passes seven to zero.
Item two is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Corrections-related matters not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
I have one.
For corrections? Yes, ma'am. Janet, note the lighting system will key, but you got five minutes.
Okay, I won't take that long. Janet Bonnet, 4502 South 14th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, South Omaha, the best part of Omaha. I want to express my concern that there's been such a delay on the Juvenile Justice Center. I'm an interpreter. I work a great deal in the juvenile justice area.
Janet, I'm gonna hold you right there. If you want to wait till the next meeting because this is not in Corrections jurisdiction, so if you want to wait till the next citizens' comments, you can do that.
Oh, adult corrections. I beg your pardon. Okay, I'll wait.
Nope, you're good. Any citizens' comments on Corrections? All right. With that, we'll go to item three, which is the report of the Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. Before I get into my report, I wanted to make you aware of an initiative that's going on this month. We have officers Whitley, Fleer, and Stella. They are wearing our alternative uniforms for October for breast cancer awareness. This is both an awareness campaign and a fundraising campaign. We do approve, this is the second year we've approved, officers to wear the pink adornments to their uniform, and they purchase these separately, and this is a fundraising activity through those purchases as well. So I want to thank them for their efforts, and it is kind of, and they look sharp. I think they actually, you know, it's too bad we can't wear pink all year round. Okay. One other comment I'll make before I get into the heart of my report here. I do want to thank the Commissioners for the opportunity they gave me. One year ago today was my first day as the Director of Corrections. Ironically, it was a holiday, which was not indicative in any way, shape, or form of how the first year was going to unfold. Nonetheless, everybody's survived, and we're going strong. All right. Enclosure number one, Administrative Services. Following the third month of the fiscal year, we are under budget by $77,214. However, I do want to point out that forthcoming resolution of union negotiations, we have more than one contract that'll be settled this year. We'll probably eat into that or erase that surplus that we have. Thankfully, overtime did trend downward a bit during September. As we've accelerated the hiring and training processes, we do hope that this trend will continue. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections. Sixteen individuals served 64 days, a combined 64 days in our sanction center. Thirty-two individuals served a combined 139 days in our transitional discharge center. The therapeutic community model continues to develop and spread. I want to thank Commissioner Kraft for coming down to one of the programs that was offered by, that the inmates put on. During September, we started using participants from units where that culture is really thriving and utilized them as guest speakers in other housing units in hopes that we can spread that culture. We will continue to add resources and develop this concept. Shai Meckna will begin her duties as the Community Reentry Services Manager on October 14th. Shai comes from the Community Mental Health Center, where she helped develop and launch our successful, our highly successful treatment program for individuals with co-occurring mental health and substance abuse disorders in Community Corrections. As a result of our ongoing reorganization efforts at the department, among Shai's primary responsibilities will be to work with multiple internal and external stakeholders to implement an array of pretrial release supervision and service options in hopes of reducing reliance on pretrial detention. I also want to point out that our next GED graduation ceremony is for individuals who have achieved their GED while in our custody. It's scheduled for November 1st. It will be in this room. I will get invites out to the Commissioners and coordinate with anybody who would like to be present and perhaps have a speaking role at that important event. Our 24/7 sobriety program had, excuse me, 76 admissions in September. 4,326 breath tests were completed. Seventeen were positive for alcohol use. There were 13 no-shows. The overall compliance rate for breath testing was 99.4. Forty-three individuals were monitored for a total of 996 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows. There was one tampering violation and one alcohol violation. The overall SCRAM compliance rate was 99.8%. There were 745 saliva drug tests administered with 20 positive results and 22 no-shows. Nine drug testing patches were submitted for testing, and there was one violation. During September, the census of the 24/7 program surpassed 300 individuals for the first time, signifying significant growth in that program, especially over the last two years or so since we have been conducting drug testing as a part of that program. Work release admitted 28 individuals, and work release clients donated 135 hours of community service. House arrest admitted 72 individuals. The reentry assistance program admitted 24 individuals, and one individual achieved their GED while in RAP. Eighty-seven individuals were admitted to Corrections programs in the jail. Pretrial services admitted 25 individuals, or excuse me, were referred for priority prosecution, which saved 229 bed days. 282 individuals were placed on pretrial release. And overall, during the month of September, 1,239 individuals were monitored or managed on pretrial release with a 91% compliance rate. 206 individuals visited the law library during September. Preparation for our annual ICE audit is underway. The audit will occur during the third week of October. And our annual security audit, which is done in cooperation with the Nebraska Department of Correctional Services, actually began this morning, and we'll have individuals on site from the state for the next three days, looking our facility over from stem to stern, and looking at our procedures to make sure that there's no gaps or lapses in our security. Enclosure number four, Personnel. Leon Velkir was promoted to captain in September. He was formerly a lieutenant. A redistribution of responsibilities among the three captains is underway. Captain Velkir is already assuming oversight of training and staff development with other duties to be assigned over the course of the coming weeks and months. We also promoted Sergeant Eric Pennell to lieutenant during September. Twenty officers graduated on October 4th, and will begin two weeks of field training, which they are currently underway. We anticipate another class of more than 20 officers to begin training on October 21st. If all goes well, that number could be 26. There's usually one or two that drop out before they officially begin, so I'm hesitant to stick my neck out on that number, but that's our tentative number. This class will follow the newly adopted model, which accelerates training by utilizing overtime for officers during training. We are able to complete training and field training in six weeks rather than eight weeks with the new model. Unfortunately, we did lose 11 officers at various ranks for a variety of reasons during September. However, I do want to point out an encouraging note regarding retention. The retention rate for our new officers has improved dramatically since the mentoring program was implemented when compared with the previous 12 months prior to that program being implemented. And as I referred to earlier, the Community Reentry Services Manager position has been filled by Shai Meckna. Turning your attention to enclosure number five, our population. We had 1,690 admissions, which is down. We were up near 2,000 in July. We were over 1,800 in August. This is now somewhat approaching normal. It's still, to me, on the high end, but at least it has backed off a bit from those peak months that we experienced earlier. We released 1,673 individuals. Our high count was 1,337, and our low count was 1,265. Our average daily population was 1,301, which is also a decrease over the previous two months. We had 309 custodial sanction bed days. The US Marshal population remains stable. The ICE population remains stable. The felony pretrial population decreased. The misdemeanor pretrial population decreased. Probation violations remain stable, and the female population decreased slightly. However, there were still four housing units for females open throughout the month. Enclosure number six, our medical. There were 1,509 intake screenings, 585 physical and health assessments. Inmates were sent out 24 times during the month of September for, actually, medical lags a month. This is B, August numbers, for emergent medical care. Eleven of those were by 911. There were 12 hospital admissions, which resulted in 49 days of hospitalization. Enclosure number seven, Mental Health. There were 166 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 170 initial mental health assessments. There were 57 mental health infirmary placements. We had seven Board of Mental Health referrals and three referrals to long-term psychiatric facilities. Other noteworthy items. With nearly all of our leadership team positions in place, we are going to embark on a department-wide strategic planning process, which will begin this month. Actually, I have my first meeting on that on Friday. The planning process will involve staff from all ranks in all operational areas. We hope to have the plan developed by the end of this year, which will set our department priorities and goals for 2020. Director of Corrections, Michael Myers. I was named Chair of a newly formed Committee of Criminal Justice Stakeholders, which will focus on reducing the jail population. Of course, I was out of town the first day of the meeting, so naturally I was named Chair. The Department of Corrections was notified of an Office of Justice Programs grant for $375,841 to implement body-worn cameras on a wide scale throughout the jail. We will be among the first jails nationally to utilize this technology on this large of a scale. Body-worn cameras have the effect of curbing inmate aggression towards staff and other inmates. The term of this grant is for three years. The Douglas County Department of Corrections and the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center partnered on a Second Chance Act grant application to create an intensive outpatient treatment program with four individuals with co-occurring mental health and substance abuse disorders in the jail. We received notification of an award of $999,462. I was wishing they had another $538, so we could say we got a million, but we're a little short. Actually, I don't want any donations because then we'll have to track that separately. It's just more reporting work. This is a four-year grant. This will replicate the intensive outpatient treatment program that we established in Community Corrections inside of the jail. That's been on operation for about five years now. So congrats to all of the people. These were two separate groups of people because they're two very different types of grants that were working on writing these applications, so I'm grateful for their efforts. They obviously did a wonderful job, and kudos to Kerry Davis as well for coordinating both efforts. And finally, we received notification that Douglas County will host the American Jail Association National Conference in 2023, which will be held at the CHI Health Center, Omaha. This is a tremendous achievement, and we are proud to partner with Visit Omaha, the Metropolitan Entertainment and Convention Authority, and the American Jail Association to plan this event. Thousands of Corrections professionals from across the nation will travel to Douglas County in May of 2023 to attend this five-day conference. We were selected among finalists, which included Orlando, Tampa Bay, Charlotte, and St. Louis. So we were in some metropolitan areas that were of much bigger size, and we were still successful. So this will be a big deal for us. Thankfully, it's a few years off. I have a few things I need to accomplish before I focus on this, but it was very cool to get that notification last week. With that, I'm ready for your questions.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. Mike, that inmate program you had, we're changing the culture, was fantastic. Please give me adequate warning because if I'm available, I definitely would like to attend the other ones. What we saw, we saw appreciation expressed by the inmates for the programming we're doing, for the opportunity to express themselves and vote on these things for people to speak. The bonding between the inmates and the correctional staff through this, the camaraderie ship, I guess you could say it. We heard an inmate who started crying during his presentation, and he apologized, and everybody said, "We've got your back. Don't be afraid to cry. Don't be afraid to cry," they all said. And he said, "Well, this is the first time I've cried since I was a child." And he didn't know how to handle it. They handled it with him. I do believe that's going to make a small change. It's not going to be overnight, but that program was fantastic. And everybody was complimenting the young lady. Who, what was her name?
The reentry specialist who's assigned to that particular housing unit is Jasmine Westbrook.
Wonderful job. Wonderful job. So now, you were talking about the growth in the 24/7 program. Is that because the judges are assigning more people?
Yes. They are, it is a judicial referred program, so yes, that is where the referrals are generated from.
So they're starting to feel more comfortable with it?
Absolutely, and I think they find the drug testing options, in addition to just the alcohol, which we started the program with, applies to a wider group of people. So as we, it is evidence that if we provide a service that's, that holds people accountable and provides adequate supervision, that they, that the judges are receptive to those options.
Good, good. And you were talking about, I'm going to call it the express training, the six-week program versus, did any of the students give you feedback?
It was well-received. I don't know that, you know, they didn't know otherwise to know what it was like under the longer program. We actually asked them all before the first day of training if this is something they could do to adjust their schedules, and they, all 20 of them agreed ahead of time. So they did have the option, you know, to provide their input, and they all were agreeable to it from the beginning. I think some of the days got a little long, but that's, to me, that's sort of just a good indoctrination to what working in jail is like anyway.
It's better than being in business where I put 12 and 14-hour days and six days a week and eight hours on the seventh day. So yes, it can be done, and it is stressful but tolerable. Yila and your employees are all doing a fantastic job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And thank you, and I'm done.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this report. They seem to get better every time you do them, so I commend you for your reporting skills. Just a few questions. On page six, where you record the average daily population, that seems to have ticked up here in the last three months where we're at 1,300 or better. Is that a, is that a new normal that we're looking at?
We, our seasonal fluctuation tends to put us up, whatever normal is, the high end of normal is kind of that July, August, September, you know, portion of the year. The, that is, I could say yes, to short answer your question, is 1,300 the new normal? Until we shift some more paradigms, that is probably what can be expected. Until we shift some more paradigms, that is probably the, what can be expected is, we're under that today, but 1,200 to 1,300 hopefully is our range, and not 13 to 14 like we were over the summer.
Right. I think that you indicated in a previous report that that, on July 2019, figure of 1,342 might have been an all-time high, as far as anybody could remember.
Yeah, and that's an average population for the month. We were up to just shy of 1,400 towards the end of that month, which that is the number I was referring to. That could have been the all-time high.
On page 11, the staffing, you know, continues along with the high population overcrowding number to be concerned, and you do a great job here of giving us a snapshot of that. So, you know, the guts of this, the corrections officer class, which is the overwhelming majority of the 470 authorized folks, and that currently is authorized at 337, and your report indicates that there's 287 on hand.
Correct.
50 under authorized strength are 85.2%, which kind of tracks with what you reported to us last month, that same percentage roughly. And the indications are that during the same period of time, as you mentioned earlier, we lost 11 officers in September, and we're adding a class, is it yesterday, or?
The, the next class starts on the 21st.
But I mean, didn't we just add?
We graduated a class.
Right.
So, those individuals would already be included in this number, because they started in September.
They were, both of those numbers, the 11 folks that left?
Correct.
And how many were in the class?
Twenty.
Okay, so.
Net gain of nine for the month.
There was a article, I don't know if you saw it, in the Sunday Omaha World Herald, relative to, you know, kind of employment problems that our community suffers across the board. And I think, except for a couple of categories, we were not ranked very high in the region or the class that they, that they did. In your experience with corrections, regionally, nationally, does everybody have kind of the problems that we're experiencing here? Because we've talked about this before, where we didn't always have this problem, but now we do, and I'm just wondering, is that something locally, regionally, nationally?
It's nationwide. I think if you are fully staffed, you're the rare exception among jails these days nationwide. I am optimistic on the direction we're heading, because of the efforts of a great number of people contributing, both on our retention side and our recruitment side. But it is a nationwide problem.
I appreciate that. Just two quick things. On page 12, you do overtime, and it looks like we're in the 3,000-hour overtime category. In the last pay period, we had over 4,000 hours, which comes to about 100,000-plus overtime hours per year. Is that about right? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes, and I actually did get the precise numbers to be able to share with boards today in comparison to August. In August, we had a total of 11,510 hours of overtime. In September, that went down to 10,928. In terms of that, the cost to Douglas County, in August, that was 459,505. In September, that reduced by almost $30,000 to 430,953. So, yeah, that trend is, that over $100,000, or excuse me, $100,000 hours of overtime is, is, what will we be on pace for, for the calendar year of 2019? I'm very hopeful that we'll take a big dent in that in 2020.
That'd be great. I think I've asked for this before, and if you could provide it, that'd be great. I'd like that monetized, how much is that? You know, if we do that, right? Thank you.
Yeah.
That's Commissioner's time on the first round. He can get another shot. Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Mike. On page two, when you talk about the 745 saliva drug tests that were administered and with 20 positive, it seems odd that of all of the things we're monitoring, that one was so high, not only with positive, but also with 22 no-shows.
So, that's actually fairly typical for us in terms of the, the drug testing does not have the success in terms of the rate of compliance as alcohol monitoring does. There are more powerful substances and individuals who are addicted to illicit substances may have a little more disorganization in their life in general than individuals who aren't using illegal substances. And so, we, that's just all my theory as to why we have a little less compliance rate. But we were told that going in, when we planned this, by the people who do 24-sevens around the country, that you won't have as high of a compliance rate for drug testing as you do for alcohol monitoring.
And so, those 20 that were positive, again, the top three, five, one, whatever was?
I'll get you the precise numbers, but I can tell you, it's marijuana and meth will be right up there in the top two.
Okay. And then, our rate per day is now what?
For?
For a prisoner to stay.
Well, we recalculated that last year based upon the costs of running the department, and that also includes the costs of the overtime and things that have been a result. And so, it, it is up over 100, I believe it was $112. Hopefully, we can make a dent in that cost in the coming year, if our hiring efforts continue to bear the fruit that they have been recently.
But, I mean, it's pretty impressive that we've had, in the pre-trial services, where there were 229 bed days saved, if you times that by the, you know, rate per day, that's, that's pretty good. And then, I just want to give you, gosh, the biggest, biggest kudos for all of the achievements on page four. Those grants are huge, just huge, and they're hard to get. And while getting the conference here was just as hard, getting those grants, it's very competitive, and you guys did excellent work on that, so I just want to give you kudos. And again, on all three of those things, whatever I can do to assist, I'd be happy to, because this is, this is big. This is a big deal.
Thank you, Commissioner. And again, I want to point out, I just was kind of in the right place at the right time. I had people, Justine Wall, I think, is sitting in the back. She was more involved in, in the Second Chance Act writing, than, you know, I really didn't have time to be involved in that. I trusted the good people who we have in place to do that work, so they should get the credit.
They do, yep. Well, extend that to them and to you, Justine, back there, but it really is a big deal. So, congratulations.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, well, I want to add my congratulations as well. It's really a pleasure to hear your report, and I have a nagging habit that I'll probably ask you at the end of my questions, and that is, I used to do this years ago, and the directors really couldn't stand it really, but I would say, okay, what's the, what's the one thing you hope I don't ask you about? So, I'm probably going to ask you that at the end of my questions, okay?
All right.
I think, I was talking with Joe, I had a presentation, I crashed the Platte Institute the other night, and Claire showed up, he had, he was incognito, but anyway. He had kept his helmet on from the motorcycle. But anyway, so, I brought up some things, and one of them was, which was really interesting. Leah did a really great job putting all the information together, and we'll be passing it out here, and Joe's going to make some comments about it as well, but not today. But Joe and I were talking, and it really struck me, one of the things that he said, which was so much on point, and that is that, and Mary Ann really brought it up just a few minutes ago, some of the, in a, not a direct way, but the programs that are really working, and that you've implemented, implemented over there, the peer groups and all the treatments and all the, all the things that you do, and particularly the program that Commissioner Kraft attended, those are all funded by the property taxes of Douglas County taxpayers. And Joe pointed out that when you look at the laws that are, what's mandated by the state legislature in our laws, has nothing to do with those programs. Those are all things that have been put together by people here in the county, and you, and others, and Mary Ann, and all the county board members at different times who've been involved, and previous directors and all the rest, who built and built on those programs to treat people with respect and dignity, and try to help them get out of the mess that they're in. And Joe told me something, it just startled, it's really true, that all the laws that are in the, in the books deal with punishment and deal with how long they're supposed to stay, and it increasingly criminalizes acts, and it has no focus on pulling people out of the ditch. And he pointed out to me, and I agree with him wholly, that it's time to have a, really a rewrite of the criminal justice laws that focus on punishment, and you're never getting out of this, and putting people in jail for small offenses and so forth, that really will ruin their lives and do other things. And we're also dealing with people, I bring up with the juvenile people, that, asking them, when they're on probation and they blow probation, that what happens is that they don't comply. Well, you see that again here, this is a population that's not used to complying with things. They've had a pretty free-loose life, you know, so we need to figure out how to deal with that, and I think you're doing well. But at any rate, it's interesting, too, that one of the things that was pulled out of the data was, I asked for the figures from a decade ago, and the expenses and all the rest of it. And one of the things they pulled out was the number of employees that were working in 2009 in your department versus today. And you know what the difference was? One employee. We had 400 in 2009, and I believe today, at the time this was taken, we had 401. So, all those people have come and gone, and the population, and of course, we put direct supervision in and all those other things that brought down the numbers, but it was fascinating to see that, you know, all the talk of, and Jim was right, you're talking about the difficulty in hiring, but it's just, there we are, one employee is what the difference is over a decade. So, it's pretty incredible that you're still, you're running the place with one employee. I don't know whether, I just asked Joe whether it's one employee more or one employee less, but anyway, that's how close you are to where you were. So, anyway, and then I do, I'm very glad that you're the, I am glad you're the Chair of that committee. I was at that meeting, and when people were being appointed by the city prosecutor, I said, "How about the county?" You know, you were there. And I don't know if a commissioner got on that or not, but I said I didn't need to be, but I'm really pleased that you're there and you're, you're steering the direction that's going. I'd like to ask you to be sure that you've got lots of things going. Is Pam going to be keeping the minutes, do you know, or whoever is? If she could let us know what they are, get us on a list so we're kept informed, and maybe even add something to your report about anything that we needed to know that might have happened? Because these are the people who are involved in the criminal justice unit of government, including the Omaha Police, so it's really important. I think those are the things, the only other thing that I really wanted to ask you, I've got a lot of questions, but we can talk, my light's coming on. I'm curious if you can give us a report of how we're treating women, because we have four units now, what we're doing for them. I'm sure many of them have gone through abuse and so forth, and we have some ways to get them into those programs, too, and I know you know that, but sometime, if you could help us focus on how we're treating the women who are coming in, and where they go, and what we do with them, okay?
Absolutely.
Mike, you're doing a terrific job, and your staff as well, I'm very pleased, and I'm just disappointed I didn't wear pink today, so, thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Following up on our earlier conversation, the statistics that we have in here, I don't know if they contain the racial composition of our corrections population, is that in here?
I don't believe that's in here, but we can, we have access to that information and can compile that.
Okay. So, we get monthly reports from the youth center, and they do a good job of breaking that out.
Sure.
You've probably seen that. It would be helpful to know what that is, because we suffer from chronic racial disparity with the over-representation of minorities in our youth center. And I was wondering, do you know offhand if that tracks with the Douglas County Corrections Center as well?
Speaking in general terms, individuals of minority descent are overrepresented in corrections compared to their representation in the community. The specific percentages, I'd be happy to provide.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Borgson.
Mike, I.
Borgson. You're next, you're next.
Just real quick, I, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just also want to publicly thank Senator Luanne Lenahan. Commissioner Duda and I had the opportunity to meet with her, and she actually walked through the jail with us to really learn about what we do, and she took, I think it was two hours of a tour, and asked a lot of good questions, and just having that time, and you guys also having the time to walk her through with us, but I just wanted to publicly thank her for taking the time to do that, because it, it really does make a difference when somebody sees what we're talking about, rather than just us talking about it. And I can tell you that her impression was just that, is that hearing it as we speak to her, there's a totally different perspective as she's seeing it, as we're talking to her. So, anyway, I just want to publicly thank her for taking the time to do that with us. It meant a lot.
Absolutely, and I'll actually plan on including that in my next report.
Commissioner Boyle.
Thanks. We're going to have to change your name, I told you that. Anyway, I need new batteries or something. I, Mike, I didn't forget about asking you that embarrassing question, but I'm not going to ask you today. I'll let you work that up, and maybe we can.
Thank you.
I'll let you worry about that. I do want to mention, too, that something, Mr. Kavanaugh asked about the racial makeup. It was interesting, we went through a few months ago with Senator Halloran and some others from around the state, and we were in that, in an area, and one of the, one of the cells was being impeded, prisoners were coming by, and I said, the three or four of them there, and I said, "Okay, gentlemen, do you notice anything about this, this group of people?" And they're all kind of looking, and I said, "They're all African-American." And it was, you know, something that they're not really very used to, of course, but that was what I noticed, and it is, the population is, probably mirrors pretty much what it's like in juvenile, you know, and so, that was something that was interesting. The other thing that I pointed out to those senators, too, was that the city jail has closed, it closed some time ago, Mayor Fay closed it, and it's incorporated and merged in our jail now, so it's, people frequently ask about, "Why didn't you merge? Why didn't you do this?" And that's one of the other quiet mergers that took place, I want to bring that up. But again, thank you for the job you're doing, it's really terrific, and those, those grants and plus that convention is just over the moon, it's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Real quick.
I just forgot to ask, and I bring this up a lot, but can we, are we at a point where we can start putting together, and maybe it's in your strategic plan, I don't know, but I really want a business plan on a weekend court or, and/or a night court. Claire's laughing, because I brought that up, and we were going on the tour, too, but...
You've been wanting that for 20 years.
I know, I know. So, I'm not going to stop, I'm going to keep pushing.
That may actually be a good topic to discuss on the committee that I was just appointed Chair of, because we need, we would need the support and buy-in of all those stakeholders.
Absolutely. But again, we have a courtroom over there, people are sitting in jail over the weekend. They don't have to. Some of them, anyway. I think it's time we do. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yesterday, you had a power outage.
We did.
How long did that go? I didn't.
It was approximately two hours. Our backup generator did kick on and function, so we did have emergency power throughout the incident. The staff did a tremendous job of securing the facility. Everything was calm and orderly throughout. I monitored the situation from our central control room, and it, other than I missed a couple of meetings, the day went without a hitch in terms of how the staff handled their, handled their, the situation safely.
And Mike, did you find out what caused that at all? I mean, was it just our property, or was it the area?
No, it was an OPPD issue, what I was told, and this may not be the very most technical explanation in the world, but that, at one of their, they had several breakers fail and a switch fail at a substation nearby.
Okay, and I think we had this in the last year another time, too, as I recall. So, we want to be extra. we wanna be extra careful because how long do we have that our generator will run?
So the generator will run for several hours and one of the things we've clarified recently is the procedures for 24-hour refueling of our generators. And so we do have that as a backup as well. I'll actually be meeting with Public Properties to discuss some additional alternatives, additional backup measures that we might be able to put in place as well. And I do wanna give credit to Public Properties for leaning, putting some pressure on OPPD for getting us among the first group to get our power restored yesterday. We initially were told it would either be at 3:30 or at 10:00, which became a little concerning, and, but we were actually back, our power was back on well before 3:00 actually, so.
Whatever we can do to be supportive for the future, because that is a serious situation and probably most serious under, you know, what you're doing in that facility and the safety of everyone. Lastly, Commissioner Borgson or Commissioner Duda do not need to answer, but I just wondered because of Commissioner Boyle's comments over the past years, we used to get money from the state and I know he wanted to drive a van and drop some of the inmates off down at the state facility. I wondered if Senator Lenahan was, you know, acknowledged that she knew we used to get millions of dollars from the state and now we don't receive any compensation from the state, and it was millions, as you stated.
Really, and the last time I stopped counting, I gave up.
So that's something, when we have our breakfast with the state senators, we might wanna at least talk about it and you're the best two judges with Commissioner Boyle on bringing that up or not bringing it up, so I'll have a yield to that. Thanks, Mike, for all you do and Amber and the rest of your staff, you have a great team of people and I know you really have the respect of all of the people you house there and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate it. Is there most to adjourn? So moved. Mr. Morgan, second, Mr. Boyle, please vote.
Good morning.
I was looking for Amber to see if she arrived with these before I stepped away and I didn't, she didn't jump out of my field of vision. One of the things we've started to do in stepping up our hiring efforts is we created a 24-hour hiring hotline that individuals can call and since we all, our lieutenants are there all the time, this phone can be responded to. We also have a general hiring email address so that all of the lieutenants involved can respond all the time, so we don't get any of those delays and people don't get lost in the shuffle as easily. So I have some cups that have our hiring hotline, have our hiring hotline number on them, and they change colors when you put cold water in them, so that's-
Oh, Mike, you can just give them a day.
The power outage was caused by Commissioner Craft, he was over there and made some toast and I told him not to do that, but-
With that, we will call the Board of-
Motion to adjourn passes.
We'll call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order.
Thanks, Mike.
Go call. Commissioner Borgson. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Chair.
Commissioner Duda.
Chair.
Commissioner Craft.
Chair.
Commissioner Morgan. Mr. Chair. Here, item one is the minutes and claims, and letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment, processed through Tuesday, October 8th, 2019. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions on items D and E, approving agreements between Douglas County and Millard School District.
We're on a-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of us.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Morgan states he's abstaining on B. Ready? You got a motion? Please vote.
Motion passes, Commissioner Morgan abstains, all their commissioners voting yes.
Item two is the consent agenda, there's 14 items, what's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Again, on items D and E, approve agreements between Douglas County and Millard School District and the Elkhorn School District, and I see that Captain Hudson from the sheriff's office is here relative to that. Could you just outline for us briefly, I think I know, but the public might wanna hear about what these agreements are?
Captain Hudson, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, I'm in charge of our school resource officer program. These are new contracts, or renewed contracts with the Elkhorn School District and Millard Public Schools to provide a school resource officer at those two school districts.
And how many school districts do we provide school resource officers to?
We have the Omaha Public School District, Elkhorn, Millard, Bennington, and DC West.
So how many officers is that total?
Total six officers, or six deputies.
Six?
Correct.
And just briefly, what do they do when they, when they go to these schools?
The main duty and responsibilities of a school resource officer is to bridge the gap between the youth in a school and law enforcement. They're also in charge of providing needed security for the school when it comes to someone trying to make any type of threats or assault of behavior at the school. One thing we've told them over and over again, they are not the disciplinary of the school. If there's a disciplinary problem or a child that won't leave a room, things of that nature, the school administrators handle that aspect of it. If it's a criminal offense, then our SROs will then step in and take care of the criminal offense.
So I'm most familiar with OPS schools, when you go to an OPS high school particularly, there's a security check, I think it's manned by security officers of OPS, but there's often a Omaha Police Department officer on the campus-
Correct.
Providing security assistance.
Correct.
Do these sheriff's officers perform those duties at these schools?
Same thing, yep. For OPS, we have Alphonsa Davis Middle School. So same thing as the Omaha Police Department, we're there to stop any threats, any type of criminal activity at the school or anyone coming from outside the school trying to get into the school.
And I think you indicated it's OPS, Elkhorn, Millard, and what other schools?
OPS, Millard, Elkhorn, DC West.
Okay. And a total of six-
Six deputies.
Six deputies. So is that six individual schools that we're servicing with this?
No, the, for Millard, we have one SRO that's responsible for three middle schools.
And the other schools, is there somebody there like eight hours a day?
Correct.
Okay. Are we compensated by the school districts for this service?
We are. We take our total salary of a, right now, these contracts call us for a Step Eight Deputy. We include the benefits and we split that in half with the school district.
And God forbid, but you hear about these things, you know, active shooters in our schools nationwide. Do these officers provide any security relative to that type of a threat?
Correct. All of our school resource officers go through active shooter training so they can defend the school in case they have such a type of activity or a type of threat. Also, they're required to coordinate with the schools in doing their lockdown, lockout drills.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There's motion second, please vote.
Motion passes, seven to zero.
We'll go to item three, which is recognition and proclamations. Letter A is a resolution recognizing Janet Burnett, a longtime Douglas County resident, for her leadership and spearheading conservatism efforts at Spring Lake Park in South Omaha. Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you, I'm gonna do something unusual, I wanna join Janet Burnett at the podium to read this, if that's okay. My name is Mike Boyle, my address is 1027 Marcy Plaza, number 201, if you wanna send gifts. Well, Claire, you told me to say it, what are you laughing about? It's my pleasure to be here today with Janet Burnett, she's a longtime friend of mine and someone that I've admired over the years for her tenacity. I think you saw that this morning when she wants to talk about juvenile justice and she'll, we have time for that a little bit later, I think, in public comments, but, so I'm here with the resolution. I have observed her for so many years and what she's done, so let me read this to you. Whereas, more than 80 years ago, the lake in South Omaha, Spring Lake Park, was drained and the old lake bed had become an ugly makeshift dumping ground. And whereas, longtime Douglas County resident Janet Burnett didn't want to see her neighborhood lose its nature and wildlife or become home to a landfill. And whereas, Janet rallied her neighbors and pushed for change by forming the Spring Lake Park Team in 1992. And whereas, for the next several years, Janet and the Spring Lake Team raised money, designed plans, and called mayors, I can attest to that, and city officials looking for support for their vision to put the lake back in Spring Lake. And whereas, despite an economic downturn and a lack of funding for the project, Janet and the Spring Lake Team didn't lose sight of their dream. And whereas, then along came the city's Clean Solutions Omaha Project, an unfunded federal mandate that required the city of Omaha to separate the sewer system. And whereas, city officials decided the Spring Lake Team project could help Omaha's ongoing effort to meet federal water quality standards for the water the city discharges into the Missouri River. And whereas, with the project nearly complete, Spring Lake Park now has a man-made lake again, native plants and trees, and improved playground, and more stormwater retention on the park's golf course, which allows pollution and sediment to disperse before releasing the water downstream into the river. And whereas, the Spring Lake Team project is a green solution for the city, saving $5 million in other sewer construction costs. And whereas, my thumb's in the way here, and whereas, the Spring Lake Park is an example of the greatness that can be accomplished when engaged residents work diligently alongside local government. Now therefore, be resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes Janet Burnett for her leadership in spearheading conservation efforts at Spring Lake Park in Douglas County, Nebraska, dated this 8th day of October 2019.
Motion by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Duda, I think I heard.
Yep.
Okay.
There you go.
Janet, please.
Thank you.
Congratulations, kiddo.
Thank you. Now I have to clear my throat, it's pretty emotional, Mike's Declaration and Proclamation did a great job of giving you a review of the history of the park. It's been wild, it's been used, it's been abused, and now it's been revived. When the city of Omaha annexed South Omaha, much to the protests of the South Omahans in 1915, things changed a little bit in government relations. And that's been 104 years ago, folks, 104 years. And I wanna say that Mike and I were actually adversaries at one point, we were, both ran for replacing Bernice Lebeds-
That's right.
-on the city council, or on the county board. And so that's where I really got to know him, but previous to that, he was the mayor of South Omaha in our minds, because he helped South Omaha a lot. And as a result of his continued mentorship and friendship and guidance through his both being mayor and taking care of South Omaha, but also the first mayor that I had to deal with with the park was PJ Morgan. I don't know if you remember all the letters we exchanged, in those days emails weren't so fluid, so we exchanged a lot of letters. And the support was there, he said, "Great idea, go for it, see what you can make happen." Then we went through a total, I believe, of eight mayors in the process of getting the lake reestablished. It was a great adventure, it was an extremely educational process to go through, I really got to learn how government worked by working with government entities. And one thing I wanna say is that you can tell a lot about a city, or a county, or a state, or even a nation by how it treats its green spaces and allows the public to access them. Thank God we had such a positive approach to using green spaces. Through the 60s and 70s, I was out there protesting and working on, on getting EPA started and all those good things that helped these things come down the pike. In the end, it was an unfunded mandate from the EPA that helped us actually get the lake back in. And since Mike covered the history of the park very well and its process, I just wanna add to the fact that Spring Lake Park's history reflects the attitudes of all those layers of government that I mentioned and the positive approach of community involvement in the process, the partnerships that we formed made a huge difference. We had great people in the right positions in parks and public works, sewer folks, the, by hiring a liaison like Linda Lovgren to work with us on the CSO project as part of the community, the city and I imagine the county had a role in it, did a great act by creating that bridge for the rest of the community to communicate with government in that process. So I could say a lot, I could say really a lot about this, but it was an alignment of stars and a miracle and all different kinds of things, but mostly it was that partnership. And I wanna tell you how much I appreciate this recognition, but I know that it's not just for me. If it had not been for all those other players and the timing of things in history and Omaha's dedication and the Douglas County dedication to our green spaces, it would be a hole in the ground that fills up when it rained and that wouldn't have worked for the rest of us. So thank you very much, I wanna thank the Board and Mike's recommendation for the park and for me. And our byline for the Spring Lake Park Team is "Keeping Nature in the City." So please, let's continue to work for keeping nature in the city, the county, the state, and our nation, protect those green spaces. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Janet. This is where you're so proud of.
Just one quick comment.
We got a- Hold up, Mike, we got a couple of quick comments to you. Commissioner Morgan.
Janet, I wondered if you remember on a Saturday, there were about 30 of us that planted trees coming off of 13th, if you were there then, and we did that, I know my wife and I were there with our kids, I forget how many trees we planted that Saturday on the hill, I can remember it like it was last week.
It was 304 baby spruce.
I'm glad you kept count. Thank you for what you're doing, it's nice that Commissioner Boyle had you down here and too bad you both couldn't have won the election to be on the county board.
One of us would have to move.
Commissioner Duda and Commissioner Craft.
Thank you, I just wanna also add my thanks to, to the work that you and the partnership have done. You're right, it took many partners, but without one person like you spearheading it, partnerships don't always accomplish much. My wife grew up within a block or two of Spring Lake Park and, and that was such a big part of her childhood and so important to her, I mean, the green space that you talked to and to see that enhanced and preserved for future generations, I know how important that is to the whole community, but really mostly to that neighborhood, I mean, that's the focal point of that neighborhood and that's so wonderful to see it doing so well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes, and as I've traveled around, both in my business duties and as a city council person and a Douglas County Commissioner, cities are very proud of their green space. They're not very proud of, I'm gonna call it brown space, you know, areas that need improvement. And it's people like you, and I've known you again for a long, I don't know how long, but it-
Lost count.
Pardon?
I lost count.
Yeah, but you're well-known in the community because of your activism and I've never heard anybody say anything negative toward you. You do a wonderful job, thank you.
Thank you, that's great.
Commissioner Borgson.
I just also wanna add my congratulations to you. I don't think we've ever really worked on anything together necessarily, but I know your name comes up many times, as Commissioner Craft said, on projects or on issues, and, and you are, you're very well-respected, well-known, and I'm glad Commissioner Boyle brought this forward. and I'm glad Commissioner Boyle brought this forth to recognize you. So thank you again for what you do for Douglas County.
Thank you.
I think that's it, Janet. We'll take a picture here.
May I make one more comment?
Yeah, cool.
Real quick. I want you to know, too, that Spring Lake Park is a national and international example of partnership building with government and the public. We've received awards from architectural associations, from landscape designers, from engineering, from water management, from stormwater control. And they've been participants in, I've been a participant in things as far as Mexico, New York, Alabama, different areas of the country. And our little park and what we were able to do with it has influenced a lot of other places to do great things. So born in Omaha, but spread across the country and the world.
With that, there's a resolution? I mean, no, there's a motion, a second. Please vote.
I vote yes.
Okay. Want to step out?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Absolutely the essence of a person getting involved in the community. So, thanks, Janet.
With that, we'll go to item B, the resolution recognized in October 2019 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Commissioner Borges.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm going to invite Ms. Clarice Jackson down from the Voice Advocacy Center to talk about this. We actually passed a resolution similar to this last year, and instead of reading the resolution word for word, I really wanted, because I think it's more meaningful for Ms. Jackson to really talk about it, and she can hit on pieces of the resolution if she'd like. So, Clarice.
Thank you, Commissioner Borges, and thank you for your support of dyslexia and the whole board for the resolution and accepting it. I am the founder and executive director of Voice Advocacy Center, which is Dyslexia Screening and Tutoring Center, and also Decoding Dyslexia, Nebraska, which is the nationwide parent grassroots support group for families of children with dyslexia. And dyslexia affects up to 20% of the population. And why I'm standing here today is to discuss the correlation between inmates and literacy, illiteracy. And dyslexia makes up 60% of those that are in the juvenile justice system or our prison population. President Trump, under the leadership of Senator Cassidy, made a bill, the First Step Act, which includes dyslexia screening and support services for people who are in the prison system to help them get their GED. I had the opportunity over the summer to spend some time in the Douglas County Youth Detention Center. And I will tell you that after doing this work for over 10-plus years, after having a daughter who had dyslexia, which has nothing to do with intellect, but how the brain processes language and is the most common learning disability, to watch her struggle all the way to the fourth grade, unable to read simple two- and three-letter words, and see the power and the difference of having the right curriculum and the right person teaching you who's educated and trained on this, that going into the DCYC for me, it passioned me even more, to be around young people, predominantly African-American males, that I had the opportunity to screen. And for them to be in there for a number of different reasons and labeled for a number of different things, to have those young men sit before me and become like little children in regards to wanting to learn, eager to learn, sounding out words, not acting like they were tough or bad or big, but just wanting to learn how to read. It was powerful to have these young men say to me, "Are you coming back? I will be here waiting for you. I expect you to come back, because you promised me you would teach me how to read." Move me beyond compassion. And I just want to say and stress to you all that amongst all of the reentry programs that you have, and they all have their place and they all have their part, please do not forget what reading does for humanity. It's a human right. And if you read, if you learn to read and you are given that opportunity, it opens up doors and opportunities that are limitless. And we must include that in any reentry program that we have. Dyslexia is real. I'm a parent of a child with dyslexia, and I'm an advocate for it. And so today is, October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. And so I just want to thank you all, and please keep that at the forefront of your minds. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan and Kraft.
I really appreciate you being here. I've had conversations recently with Rebecca from Fix Dyslexia.
Yes, yes, yes.
You probably know her.
Yes, I know who she is. Yes, yes.
And her husband, it had made me aware of the percentage and the high number-
Yes.
-and the tremendous effect it has. And I think there's more we need to do and to make the legislature even aware what we'd like to see. Maybe the schools doing more-
Yeah.
-and all of us together.
Right.
Senator Lenihan, not to cut you off, Senator Lenihan, and Senator Panzing-Brooks, and Senator Walz, and I can't remember if there's another senator, forgive me for that, they have been supportive. And actually, a bill was passed in 2018 recognizing dyslexia, requiring them to screen children and to provide support. So it's started, but we need to do more, as you said.
Keep us involved of what might be going, or myself at least, involved in, you know, some different things that are going on concerning this and how we might become more involved.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. When you're at our youth center and working with the students, are you also training our educators on what they need to look for and how to respond and how to teach?
That was something that we were going to do going forward. Once, it was a two-month pilot, and then moving forward, we were definitely going to do that, because I do do that in the community and at the universities as well. So yes, that's something that definitely needs to be done.
And you said 20% of the population has dyslexia.
Yes.
When you were in the youth center, do you have any idea what the percentage was?
I only had the opportunity, because again, it was two months, to screen about 13 students, and all 13 of those students had the signs of dyslexia. So we started to provide our program for them.
Okay. And have you done presentations for all the school boards in the area?
I have, mostly, yes. OPS specifically, yes.
I was hoping you had.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borges.
Well, I can't thank Clarice enough. She actually opened my eyes to this issue, and we actually wanted to do a six-month program at the youth center-
Yes.
... and it kept getting pushed down the road. But the two-month actually was one that, again, opened our eyes to say we need to do more. So we're hoping that we will be able to continue this and, again, expand on it. The screening and evaluation process is one thing, but the tutoring and the follow-through is another. And so we're working on all that. And again, as we reform our juvenile justice system to be able to give these children the ability to read, what better thing can we give them? So we're still working on it, and it will be one that I want to prioritize to be able to do at the youth center with you. So again, thank you for your advocacy, your passion, and your compassion for those within our justice center with this issue.
Thank you. Thank you all again.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Borges, do we move it? You want to move it? There's a motion, is there, second? Motion, a second, to approve item B. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll go to item four, which is citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to comment on board of commissioners-related items, not listed on the agenda. I see Janet is left, but... With that, anyone has citizen comments?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I attempted to get on the agenda as a presenter, and that was rejected. So I do want to talk about rules today, primarily just the agenda. And I want to give an example of why I've asked and implied that you should rewrite the rules a little bit. Citizens don't maybe understand when they come down here at the last minute that there are three or four different agendas. And the statement that you have typed on here applies equally to all of those agendas, because it does not say that that lady can't comment on juvenile corrections. All it says is, for the Board of Corrections, for example, or equalization, it doesn't tell you by agenda that this is the one for the corrections, or this is the one for the Board of Equalization. It just says, citizens cannot comment on anything that is on the agenda. But she hears you talking about corrections, because she didn't have time to analyze it, and she wants to come up and comment on corrections. You said, "Public comment," but then you shut her down. Does not the youth center come under corrections? Citizens thinks it do, think it does. So please reword these citizens' comments things. I mean, plain, simple language. The agenda itself here does not give you notice, because you don't get it till you walk in the door. So it can't give you reasonable notice. Strike that sentence or something. Tell us, citizens, to go out early and get a newspaper, or the Douglas County, the Daily Record, go on the computer and look up the agenda ahead of time, which sometimes isn't very much notice either, and study and analyze it, so you know what you're doing when you come down there. And then you'll realize that you can't comment on anything that's on the agenda. So then you stay home. And what do we have? Very few citizens, because it's at 9:00 instead of 5:30. Well, a lot of them can't even make 5:30, instead of 7:00 or 8:00. Citizens can't do so. In the spirit of our Constitution, which we all swore to on oath or affirmation, the Open Meetings Act implies that you can make the rules, but yes, they need to be reasonable. Yeah, we can debate the word reasonable, but you don't want to debate with the citizens. It says so. That's not the spirit and intent of our Constitution. Citizens do have a part, and it is for the people. It's not for necessarily the legislators. You need to understand that, and that we are not a democracy. Yes, I elected some of you, but he expects you to follow the Constitution, okay? Don't make unreasonable rules. That's what they said. And listen to the people. They went out to the street to get information from the people, but you don't want it, because you say right here that I can't comment on this agenda. So you rejected my effort to get on the agenda and my effort to get on as a presenter. I would like the media here to get into this story on the rules. Are we violating the Open Meeting Act? Whose intent, if you read that, whose intent? Your intent or my intent? The citizen. It implies the citizens. Yes, gives you the right to make reasonable rules. And yes, I can file a lawsuit and go down to the Supreme Court down there and be told that I don't have standing, even as a citizen. Slow down and think about it in citizens' terms, in simple language. Constitution's not in language that you need a constitutional expert on. That's for everybody right there. You don't need volumes and volumes and volumes. Those volumes and volumes are people that are putting words into the Constitution. And I know you don't like to listen, but thank you anyway for your attention.
Thank you. For the record, anybody from the public, if they want to see the county board's agenda, a preliminary version is made available every Thursday before the next meeting, and that's available until Monday, when the final agenda is there to have. Also, if you want to comment on any item that's requiring action, the public is always given due notice to do that, so there's every opportunity to do that. Any other public comment?
Just a quick follow-up. Janet Bonnet, 4502 South 14th Street, South Omaha. The delay in the building and organizing of the Juvenile Justice Center is of great concern to me. I am an interpreter in the courts. I work a lot in the juvenile courts and in probation, and I go to house visits for follow-up interviews with the parents and the children. I go to their psyche evals. I'm running all over town to do these things. And I think it would be very cost-effective for the county to have a location close to the courthouse where the services are concentrated, easy to get to, with sufficient parking, so that parents don't have to be late for their appointments because they can't find parking downtown. Proximity to the courthouse only makes sense. I would like to see this move forward as quickly as possible. I realize that there are lawsuits and that have to be dealt with, which is a real shame. Probation officers are in the Key Line Building now for juveniles, and they are, that building is sick. The air is bad. You feel bad when you're in there. The lighting is poor. The layout is poor. It needs to be changed. Those officers do an awful lot of work, and it's preventative work to keep those kids from entering into adult corrections eventually in their life. These are very important processes. They deserve attention. They deserve a decent facility. And the idea of putting those kids in the different locations, Omaha Home for Boys, Boys Town, Utah Holly, I think it's great, so that they don't feel like they're in jail or that they're being closed in or oppressed. The psyche of a juvenile is entirely different than that of an adult in many respects, but being enclosed, being forced to a regimen that's inappropriate for their growth as young people is not good for them. So I hope that it can move forward quickly and appropriately. And from what I saw, the designs, it was going to be a beautiful building. I think that many of the public just haven't paid attention to what really happens to a youth once they enter the system of juvenile justice. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Any more public comment?
Captain Hudson's here, his office. I want to clarify one thing that I said earlier. One of the school districts that we have is Bennington School District, but also in 2020, Elkhorn High School, they're going to be adding a new high school, so we're going to be adding another SRO. And in 2021, Elkhorn will be adding a new middle school, so that would be an additional school resource officer. Just clarification.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ron Murtaugh, Douglas County Court Administrator. It wasn't planned on speaking, but I just wanted to update the commissioners on something that has occurred in last year. So when the court now has a laptop computer that goes home with the duty judge, and we've incorporated electronic signatures. So if somebody gets arrested, there's a probable cause affidavit that's created by law enforcement. It is scanned to a shared email box that's on this computer. The judge reads that immediately, sets a bond immediately, puts on a digital signature immediately, and sends that back to corrections right away. So- So back two, three years ago, it used to be that the judges would receive these at their house physically by an officer. They would fill them out, then they'd bring them in on Monday morning, fax that, fax those over to corrections. Now it's done. Some judges do it two, three times a day on Saturday and Sunday, but then it gets emailed to corrections right away. So that is something that's changed in the last year. It cuts down on officers going to the judge's house. They can do it right from the building. They can apply a digital signature. The judge turns right around, gets it to corrections, so there's no unnecessary lag time. So as conversations continue, I just want to share that with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Are there any other public comments? Okay, if not, we went to break to take the picture that we were going to take with Carice, and then we'll come back. Okay. With that, we will go to item six and public hearings. Item A is a farmstead lot split preliminary plat request for Larry Dryer as the applicant of proposed Lot 1 of Dyers Acres Second Subdivision in northwest 1/4, southwest 1/4, south half, northwest 1/4, and northwest 1/4, northwest 1/4, all in Section 9 Township, 14 North Range, 10 east of 6. PM parcel numbers involved are 0105-00000 and 0104830000 and 010480000. General location, east side of 255th Street, approximately 1 1/2 mile south of Q Street. With that, this is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing. Doug.
Planner from 15335 West Maple Road, Suite 201, the old Fitzgerald home. So all three agenda items, items A, B, and C, are regarding the same property. The first two, a preliminary and final plat, so I'd like to just talk about them together.
Let me note before you go, we'll officially open the public hearing for A, B, and C, then we'll vote on them separately, just for the public. If anybody's here and you want to comment on any of these, this is the public hearing for all three, and then we'll vote separately on each item. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a preliminary and a final plat of a farmstead lot split, and then a rezoning from agriculture to rural residential of the lot split property. The planning commission met on August 14th and recommends unanimous approval of all three requests. Specifically, the request is to create an approximate five-acre tract for future residential construction and separate that five acres from the surrounding farm ground of approximately 160 acres. This is the typical lot split request and complies with our zoning regulations. I would note, however, that on the planning commission to approve the preliminary plat and the final plat, they did add the following verbiage, which staff is in favor of and the applicants are okay with. That verbiage reads as follows. Be approved with staff to work with the applicant regarding a permanent easement along the road to serve as access to the adjacent properties. And if a motion is made today by you to approve, I will ask that you incorporate that verbiage. And as I mentioned, the applicants are aware of and concur with that verbiage. So I'd like to take you on a little trip here. Again, it's to create about a five-acre tract. We are east of 225th and south of West Q, which you'll see, I pay attention now because look at that little star that showed up there on the bottom. That's where the, and Chelsea, my intern, is responsible for all this. So we are just west of Hamptons and Forest Glen, and this property does about the Elkhorn River. So kind of like that Tetris-looking thing there in blue is the 160 acres of which this five-acre tract is coming from. There's your star. So you can see it's right on the river. Kind of a unique-looking property. So the area highlighted in red there, the long, narrow tail, that's the road. It's an existing road, and that will provide access to, you see, the larger lot towards the bottom. Here's our comp plan map, and there's our little red star. From a zoning standpoint, you can, the green is all agricultural, kind of the brown is rural residential. There's the lot. So that approximate five-acre tract will be zoned from Ag to RR2. Couple of the signs we post. This is a picture of the site. The Elkhorn River would be off to your left. The property would be off to your right. And again, the planning commission does recommend in favor of all three items.
Again, are there anybody from the public that wants to testify? Again, is there anybody from the public? With that, Commissioner Kavanaugh and Duda.
Thank you. How far is the river from this property?
This property abuts the river.
So was it flooded this spring when it flooded?
Commissioner Kavanaugh, that is a great question. When these folks came in to see me, I thought, you can't do this. It's in the floodway. It's surrounded by some floodway and some flood fringe. This property is either in the flood fringe or not in the floodplain at all. So it is a buildable location.
So could we see the overview again to give us some ideas?
Okay, let me, there?
Yeah.
Let me get the star off of there for you. There you go.
So is that the river, the darker green?
Yes, sir.
Portion?
Yep. This would be the river right here.
Okay.
Now, what's interesting is, and historical photos will show you this, is that there used to be a railroad line here. And so probably where you see the kind of this cluster of trees and stuff like that was probably built up as part of the embankment to cross the river, and so that would buy, that's why this property would not be in the floodway.
You're saying that that railroad causeway, whatever, would act as a levy against the river?
No, not a levy, but it's been there for years and stuff, and it's just high ground. That would have been taken into consideration when the flood maps were done here within the last 20 years or so.
Okay. But this spring, there were extensive aerials taken of this entire area in conjunction with the flood. Your hearing was held subsequent to those. Did you have those available to you to see the actual flood this spring?
I don't know that, like, from a drone?
Well, FEMA and others did a lot of photography to determine the extent of the flood damage this spring. You're aware of the flood, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It was a big deal, and pretty much the entire area between the Platte River and the Elkhorn River was inundated. I'd be interested if those flood pictures were available to you or the planning board when you were discussing this.
No, we did not. We did not look at those. Now, the applicants have done an elevation certificate, which is required for them to build in a flood-prone area. The existing ground is higher than the base flood elevation. And so we would be able to issue a building permit provided the lowest floor is a foot above the BFE, or the height of the water during the 100-year storm. Now, no doubt, some areas out there were flooding, but this property was apparently not.
That's based on what? There are photos taken?
The flood maps and the elevation certificate.
Right, right, right. Those were taken sometime prior to the flood that we're talking about that occurred this spring.
No, the elevation certificate, I believe, is just a month old.
Okay. Who produced that document?
Registered surveyor, licensed surveyor.
That they retained?
Yes.
The property owner? Okay. So what does it say, the elevation certificate?
That the existing ground is higher than the base flood elevation.
And what is the base flood elevation?
Unfortunately, I did not bring that with, but I don't know the exact number, but the base flood elevation stands for, and forgive me if you know this, the height of the water during the 100-year storm. And so any new construction out there, their lowest floor, and this will include like the venting for the mechanical and the air conditioning and stuff, all that has to be a foot above the base flood elevation.
Okay, we'll talk again.
Commissioner Duda? Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, this is only one house being built, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have these people been there for a long time, the Dyers? That's a name that's familiar.
Actually, Commissioner Duda, this property right here was a lot split property, oh, within the last two or three years.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Well, I can, boy, I can tell you, I mean, we're going to be building a house soon on our farm, and I know where it floods, and I'm not going to build a house where it floods. I mean, anybody that just watched the flood, I think, knows enough to say, I don't want to build there. You know, I got to give them, I mean, I'm glad they got the surveyor's certificate and everything, but only an idiot would sit through a flood and then say, I want to build a house right where that just flooded.
Correct.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Duda, and only an idiot would approve something that is going to be flooded. But history has taught us again and again and again that people build in floodplains, and there's hundreds of millions of dollars in claims to FEMA and others from the flood this spring relative to people who build in a floodplain. And not the first time that that's flooded, and it's not going to be the last time. Where is the proposed structure from the river that we're talking about being built?
Okay, so we've not had actual, a site plan or a building permit come in yet?
Uh-huh.
But it obviously, I mean, we do, the well and the septic have to be, have setbacks from open water, but in the building, I guess they could build right up to the embankment if the elevation certificate is, if they meet the elevation certificate requirement.
Okay. So this rezoning that we're entertaining here is for how much of the property that we're looking at on this map?
Let me go back here. If it will let me. Okay, so this is the building area right down here.
Right by the river?
Yes, sir. Now, they could build anywhere in that kind of rectangle area as provided they meet the setbacks of the RR2 zoning district.
Sure. Have you been to this property?
Yes.
Okay. And tell us a little bit about the topography of that red zone, if you could.
Well, the road itself is pretty flat to here, and then if you look at this picture, keep going here. This one, the property, you can see where the rock is and all this right here?
Uh-huh.
This is the area that's been built up, which is where I believe the railroad would have put that in so they could cross the river. Although I haven't seen a site plan, I suspect they will be building in this upper area up here.
And that rock is what?
They could have put it in there for riprap or...
I see. So there was a bridge across the river at this point?
Yeah, yes. And I don't have those historical pictures, but yeah, there was a railroad. In fact, if you look at, oop, sorry. Okay, all right, sorry. Trying to show you a good picture. Okay, if you look here, you can see, well, it's hard to see, but even all the way up here that that's where the rail line was.
I see.
And if you cross the river and you go to the southeast, there is over in this area a concrete railroad bridge abutment.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes? I want to ask, do we have a, Doug, a comprehensive plan for this area?
Yes, and this?
No, not this area. I mean, for our jurisdiction in the county, do we have some kind of a plan like what zoning should be or is, or, I mean, you're coming back, and I understand, it's developing, but you come back, you know, every week with another deal. I just wonder whether there's any master plan that Douglas County has put together for, like the city of Omaha does for areas?
Yes, we have a comp, sure. Yep, we did that, adopted that in last year, 2018.
Okay, so, and all of these, of course, are in compliance, is that right?
Yes, they are.
Okay, good. Thanks.
With that, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will, can, is there most approved item?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Borgeson. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
There are motions second to approve item B. Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Boyle.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you.
Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
There are most approved item C. Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Boyle.
One moment, please. Okay. Mr. Kavanaugh. Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll go to committee discussion. Item A is the Finance Committee. Item one is the Budget Report.
We still have money in the bank, don't we?
Yeah. That's submitted. We'll go to item D, Community Service. Real quick, Commissioner Craft, I wanted to make a brief comment.
Yes, Saturday, October 12th, at the Extension Office, 8015 West Center Road, they're going to have the Fall Family Fun Day between 10:00 in the morning and 2:00 in the afternoon. Now, I'm going to repeat that because, you know, people weren't expecting it, but October 12th, Fall Family Fun Day, which is an excellent chance to learn what the extension does, both in gardening and plant care, in insect control, in forage, in all the different aspects. And it's good for kids, it's good for adults, good for teenagers. You know, if I could be there this Saturday, I would, but my wife informed me I had a conflict. And it, 10 to 2, and it said, 8015 West Center at the Extension Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Item G is Human Resources. Item one is the weekly personnel, I mean, weekly personnel report from civil service as submitted. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a comment about this.
Which one?
Well, what you're talking about right now, a weekly personnel report.
Okay, please do.
I just want to mention, because we talk about jobs and all the rest of it, if you clicked on that or opened up or whatever it is you have in possession, there are 127 jobs open in Douglas County, and most are in corrections, but quite a few in the health center. And, but it's interesting also that we've only had five employees leave, two from the health center, one nurse aide, and the other housekeeping. But in corrections, we had two people leave, and then another attorney actually quit. So there's only five people who have left Douglas County employees since August. So it is a tight labor market, no doubt. And as I said, we have 127 openings. And it's something I asked for because I want to kind of get a clue on what's going on sometime. This is very helpful to show the difficulty we're having in hiring people.
Thanks for that point. Item two is legislative issues. Are there any matters that can't wait to the Human Resource Committee later on? Okay, with that, we do have a need for executive session for labor negotiations and litigation. With that, is there a motion to go in? We reserve the right to enter an executive session or to protect the public interest in a discussion, go on labor negotiation litigation. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Note to the public, when we return, after we get out of executive session, there will be a Human Services Committee meeting held upstairs in 9:03. Please vote.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.